We now call this meeting, regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome this house full of folks we have here with us tonight. Thank you for coming out, also those who'll be watching on G10 television. We're going to begin our meeting tonight. I'm going to ask 867 of the Girl Scouts, or the Scouts, I'll just say Scouts, if you'll come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have our city attorney do the invocation. Please rise.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause again this evening, as always, to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this most beautiful day, and for all the blessings you most graciously bestow upon each of us, individually and corporately as the city of Jacksonville. As we enter another hurricane season, we also pause to ask that through your divine providence, that you would protect us, that you would keep our city and our community free of storms and of hurricanes. Keep us safe, Lord. And as we look forward tomorrow to the Juneteenth celebration, a national holiday, we pray that we would each pause and reflect on how we are together, and how we have commonality one to another, and that each of us would strive to seek unity and justice for all people. And we pray this evening for those in our military who are serving us here and around the world, who are putting their lives at risk to protect us, to protect the freedoms that we so graciously enjoy. We pray for them and their anxious families. And as always, we pray that your guidance and that your direction would be with our mayor and council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Please be seated. Counsel, this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting with the addition of item number 17, which is the contract award for construction restrooms at the Jim Gardens.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, signify with a C and a I.
Aye.
All opposed. I'm going to come up front. I would like to ask our 2024 state champions in soccer from Jacksonville High School, if you'll join me up front with your coaches. I've never seen so many Cardinals. It's been a while. I'm an old Cardinal. My feathers have turned a little gray over time. But anyways, good to see y'all up here. Congratulations. We were so tickled to hear about your victory there. First time. First time our high school's been state champion in soccer, women.
Yes, sir.
I do have a proclamation that's been made specifically, especially for this day, to recognize y'all's wonderful feet. You make us proud, you know that, right? You make us all proud. And I'm going to read them in the paper because the printing on this proclamation is too small for my old Cardinal eyes. So, "Whereas it is fitting that we should recognize the Jacksonville High School Ladies Cardinals Soccer Team for capturing their first North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A Girl Soccer State Championship title. And whereas the 2024 Jacksonville High School Lady Cardinal Soccer Team consists of head coach Amanda Peunch, assistant coach Becky Kostovny, Taylor Leibel, and Bella Nunu, and 26 outstanding players. And whereas the champions finished 2024 season 21 wins, one loss, and four ties, and remain unbeaten in their final 13 games." Whereas throughout the 2024 season, the Lady Cardinals have scored 82 goals, had only nine goals scored on them, and posted 18 shutouts. Y'all didn't feel bad for them other teams at all? And whereas Jacksonville High School's Lady Cardinals Soccer Team have been the big Carolina Conference Champions for consecutive times, and are the only team in North Carolina to post six shutouts in the playoffs. And whereas we find it appropriate to acknowledge and applaud the coaches and outstanding players for having a successful season, and for securing the title of state champions. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Saturday, June 1st, 2024, as Jacksonville High School Lady Cardinals Soccer Team Day in the city of Jacksonville. And I encourage the citizens to join me in recognition for the hard work and dedication of both the coaches and players for a great season. Go Lady Cardinals. Who's coming back next year? All right, you're going to win another one, right? Give them a hand, folks. Coach?
I'm going to get a picture or two before they leave.
Let me get behind you.
Should we get two rows?
Y'all already important.
Should we, yeah, make a row?
Counsel is going to get a better picture, but I'm going to get this picture. It's fantastic. Congratulations.
I know that a lot of you came tonight for this presentation, and I know you girls can stay out later tonight because it's not a school night. Not that you, not that matters at your age, anyway. I'm going to take a brief second or two, so unless you want to stay and watch the rest of the council meeting, which is up to you. I'm going to take a pause. I'm going to take a pause if you want to leave. Thank you for coming. And we were very honored to have you tonight.
Great picture. That was fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See, Taylor. Got that last one out, the coach.
Mayor, before you get cranked back up, we had one more picture that you didn't get to see, and it was of Coach Wally Hanson, right here, with a lot of these girls about eight years ago. So it all started with Wally teaching them how to play, and then it ended up in a championship. And then Wally disappeared, the whole team left, Mayor. I know.
I thought that was a paternity picture. And that's why he left.
This is where, this is where our people do a lot of the coaching. And Mr. Sosa's not here, but he does a lot of coaching through the program as well.
That's amazing.
It's impressive to see him go from there to here.
Well, you know, not just to his home because he's one of our folks, but you know, that's really great when somebody, a citizen, steps forward and does what he's doing there, you know, as a coach, as a mentor, as a leader.
It's impressive to have people step up. And we have a lot of coaches throughout the city that volunteer year after year, and they do this. They don't always get to celebrate a state championship, but for this one, even though Wally left, he's put a little bit of a footprint on being a part of that team, and now they bring home a state title, so it's impressive.
He should be proud.
We don't have any more pictures, Mayor, so you can get back to work.
Okay. All right, Counsel, we have our first section of public comment this evening. And you've got at your place a little card right here that talks about the Summer Latin Fiesta. And I'm going to ask, the only person that signed up is Ms. Christina Fernandez, if you would come forward and speak to us, ma'am. And we do have a three-minute rule, and I know you're going to talk about specifically this, so.
All right, Mayor Phillips, members of the city council, viewers on G10 TV, residents of Jacksonville and citizens of Onslow County. We'd like, my name is Christina Fernandez, the president of the Onslow Hispanic Latino Association. We'd like to invite you all to join us at our Summer Latin Fiesta, to be held Saturday, July 27th, at the Commons Recreation Center. Last year, we enjoyed over 7,550 people in attendance at our first Fiesta since the pandemic. This year, and we're expecting a lot more, we are having entertainment inside and out. The Marine Corps Band will open up the event for us with their beautiful music. And we'll have vendor opportunities, we'll have 20 food trucks, we'll have a car show. There's a lot to do, a lot of cultural activities we'll have, we'll have family activities, children's activities. You just have to be there in order to be able to experience the entire situation. But we had such a good time last year, and we would love to have you all join us this year again.
Well, thank you for bringing us that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Everybody got the card? Yes? Absolutely.
This lady standing before you is a good example of how the TDA uses the money that we collect, your TDA, and the citizens, collect money from our hotel folks here, from people coming from out of town. And we're proud to continue to support. You've been a great partner. And what I like is two things. Number one, you've given something for the citizens of Jacksonville and Onslow to do, a family event. But number two, you're celebrating a diversity as well as inclusion. We're celebrating the fact that their Latino members are here in our community, but we're also celebrating the fact that they're included in our community. And we, for that, we thank you, and we're happy to support you, and hope you have a lot of success at your Fiesta Day.
Thank you. We're very appreciative of the JTDA for their award for assisting us with the marketing. That is going to be big. We had people from all over Eastern Carolina, as well as Virginia, South Carolina. We just had a lot of people from all over come out last year.
Well, we consider this not a cost, but an investment. We're investing in our community, and we're proud to do so, so thank you.
And Lord willing, we're hoping to make this a yearly event. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, we have some minutes, and we have 13 consent items on here. And I'd entertain a motion, and a minister, from the May 28, 2024 special meeting, and a June 4, 2024 workshop meeting. I don't need a motion. Move for adoption of the minutes and consent items as listed?
Second.
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, signify with a C and a I.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that brings us to some public hearings that we have here. First item, number 14. This is a public hearing for the five-year consolidated annual action plan from Neighborhood Improvement Services. Pam, I assume you're going to lead.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
So it is a pleasure to be here before you this evening to go through our five-year consolidated and annual action plan. The change-up for this year is, we received our information later than we normally do, so we're a bit behind, but still within schedule. Normally, we would have been before you, so we would submit it by May 15th. But this year, we're going to have our submission due no later than July 2nd. So tonight's meeting will be an opportunity for you to see the information of our five-year plan, but also to receive any input from those that are present today. The purpose of our five-year plan, we are covering the years of 2024 through 2028. It also will include our first annual action plan, which begins with fiscal year 2024. And the outcomes that we're looking for is to get that last input that we are looking for within our community, to make sure that we've identified all the needs that have been identified as a priority, and give an opportunity to make sure we have not missed those priorities out there. So a little bit of information with our Community Development Block Grant, which is what our five-year plan is focused on. It's a program that's administered by HUD, and it provides the communities with the resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs. And since we're using community development funds, we have to focus on three goals that HUD looks at. First, we're making sure that we're identifying benefit low and moderate income persons or an area, doing slum and blight removal, and also addressing an urgent need, which an urgent need will look at if a disaster has taken place, and those funds are presented to us. Within those goals, we want to make sure that we are doing decent, safe, and sanitary housing, providing those suitable living environments, but also looking at opportunity to expand economic opportunities. So these are ways that we can spend our development block grant funds. HUD specifically came out with strategic goals to cover from 2022 through 26. And those four goals include supporting underserved communities, ensuring access to and increase the production of affordable housing, promoting homeownership, and advancing sustainable communities. So as we continue to plan out the five-year goals, we want to make sure that whatever we identify as activities, that we are looking at these strategically. Once we have the funds available, again, it's looking at how are these funds being utilized? Are they addressing an opportunity for us to acquire properties or do demolition, which takes care of the slum and blight? Are we addressing opportunities with our public services, where we do partnerships with our nonprofit agencies, to identify things that the city of Jacksonville is not able to do, so we do the partnership with our nonprofit communities? And in the planning process, we started back in December with community input meetings. So we had an opportunity to go around the community. We visit churches, we visit different nonprofit agencies within our homeownership classes and money management classes. We gave each opportunity for a citizen to provide us input of what they identified as a priority. Looking at over the next five years to receive an expectancy of 1.9 million in community development block grant funds, but also over $1 million in program income. Our program income is generated from loans that we've already given throughout the years, and those funds are being paid back to the city. The annual action plan, again, is devised to provide action to the five-year plan in itself. So even though we have a total five-year plan of what we would like to see happen within the city, each year we will come back and say, this is what we are looking to do for. So tonight's meeting will include not only the five-year plan, but what we're looking to do within that first five year, that first year. This chart gives you an example of the amount of funds that we received over the course of 10 years. As you can see, it's been pretty steady at 360 to 370, and then in the past two years, it increased. And this year, for our first annual plan, we received $438,000 to be able to bring back within the community. And so that 438,000 is what's going back to address those eligible activities that was on the previous slides. So out of the planning process in itself, the way that is broken down, there's 437,000 in entitlement funding that we are receiving, 233,000 is estimated with the program funding, so a total of our fiscal year '25, starting July 1st, will be $671,000. And prior year funding that we currently have in our bank account to spend is $332,000. So these are all the funds that we're currently utilizing to spend. And the way that those funds are broken down, administration is proposed at 107,000, clearance and demolition nonprofits at 50,000 apiece, our rehab, 113,000, affordable housing at 200,000, and acquisition, 50,000, economic development, 50,000, and then down payment assistance, another 50,000. That brings it to a total at 671,000. And this just identifies what we already know. We have more needs than we have in the resources, so we want to make sure that that stays in the forefront, that we are still trying to address our community needs, but know that there's going to always be a need for more funds to come through. And our current target areas, we look at the citywide as a whole, but also place our focus within New River through the census tract, and then also looking at opportunities that we can expand within downtown. Our priority needs, this has been updated from previous slides because, again, based off of what the feedback was given through the surveys. Homelessness stayed at the top of what's needed, homeless prevention services, transitional houses, rapid rehousing. Again, looking at the demolition and clearance, making sure we are addressing clean and green, public access, public improvements in facilities, and special housing needs. The community feels like we definitely need to keep the focus on our elderly, disabled veterans, and victims of domestic violence. Veterans populations, and then affordable housing. How can we make sure that we are increasing down payment assistance, property acquisition, housing rehabilitation loans, and grants opportunities? So these will always have an opportunity to change the focus each year because it's just a matter of what does the community see as our priority for that upcoming year? All right, within public facilities, again, we get an opportunity to look back at our target areas within New River, and then looking at the feedback that was grafted out from our census on what is the community shifting? Where are opportunities with low-income households arising that we need to make sure that we have those on our radar? And make sure that if we need to address funds in those areas, that we have those identified as well. Currently, we do those same activities, but we have an opportunity to look at owner-occupied low-interest loans and grants through our rehab program. The opportunity to do down payment assistance, utilizing not only our funds with CDBG, but also tapping into North Carolina Housing Finance Agency funds. Continuing to do our homebuyer education classes with down payment assistance, and the great opportunity that we have with our housing counseling agency program with the approval from there, we've been able to expand it and go into other communities to provide those down payment assistance opportunities. And so it's definitely a great need because the city of Jacksonville currently is the main one on the East Coast. So we do have a lot of requests for housing counseling services. And then continue to do our demolition of slum and blight, but also taking that opportunity to partner with our fire department for training exercises as well. And acquisition, again, we look at just neighborhood revitalization, looking at the census tract, seeing where do we need to put focus on neighborhoods. But also scattered sites are meaning those one or two houses that need that extra love from community development funds. So I stand here before you with the recommendation that after the public hearing has been opened and comments received, that council will adopt and approve the five-year consolidated plan and the annual action plan for fiscal year '24, '25, so that we may submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Quick question. You mentioned that the North Carolina Housing Finance Funds for Down Payment Assistance, is that money that the city gets to distribute, or is that done on a case-by-case basis, application by the future homeowner?
So case-by-case scenario. We have the opportunity that when a citizen is in the process of purchasing a home, if they need additional funds, they will submit an application to us for us to actually submit to North Carolina Housing. Upon their approval, they can receive 25% of the sales price, not to exceed $50,000. And we had an opportunity to close a transaction in February this year, where that person was able to purchase a home using those funds.
Good news. Good news.
What is the criteria on that?
Criteria, so definitely application process, low, moderate income qualifications with their income limits, and then credit score 640. And from there, we look at, you know, tax incomes, pay stuffs, to make sure that they can actually afford the additional assistance. Because even though the assistance is given, they're still required to pay those funds back at the end of 30 years. So we want to make sure that we're not putting them in a scenario where we help them get in a home, but then we run the risk of them being foreclosed on a home.
I have a question. What happens when you have, I think about some of the residents that live on Market Street and Picket Town. So what if you have individuals that make just a little bit more? We'll look at those individuals as falling through the cracks. They, their income just pushed them above the level of where they can receive some type of CDBG funding. What do we do for those particular clients or residents?
Good evenings, Mayor and City Council. I can answer that question. Currently, we are in partnership with the Development Finance Initiative, with the School of Government, with UNC, and we're developing a housing policy. And that's going to be one of the components in our housing policy in conjunction with the housing resolution that you all passed in September. So you may have some people that are just above the 80%, that they will not be able to access CDBG funds. But with the general funds that you all have put in for development of affordable housing, that may be an opportunity for us to address those folks who are falling through the cracks.
Question. I know that vouchers, HUD vouchers, can be used for down payment. Has that been, because of what's going on in our community, where every time you have allowances for the military increase, is that ever taken in consideration? Have they moved that up or changed that since our allowances has increased?
Yes, so with the opportunity of us doing the housing counseling agency, we're starting to get deeper into learning more about the Section 8 housing voucher. Because you can purchase a home using your Section 8 housing voucher. Partnership with East Carolina and having them come out and do classes and informative, so that way those persons that are going through the process currently will be able to purchase that home. So we haven't sold the first one yet, but we are working on those that are going through the program.
That's good, because one of the issues when everything went down at Town Center was that the vouchers were so low, so a lot of those folks couldn't actually use the vouchers to go and get other housing.
Yes, sir. And one of the things, for those that are with our viewing audience in here today, And one of the things, for those that are with our viewing audience in here today, with our housing counseling services, our ultimate goal is to make sure that those that are coming through the homeownership process really understand what it means to be a homeowner, and not looking at it just from the standpoint of having the house over their head. But again, going back to being able to maintain their home, understanding the economic feasibility behind it. So that way, it's not always looking at low, moderate income. We want them to be able to transform out of it.
I will also add that this is an opportunity for them to use their vouchers as a subsidy for a payment. So when she said that you can use your housing vouchers for a purchase, that means that your vouchers can be used along with your payment. This is one of the ways that economic mobility would take place. It will lift an individual out of poverty and make them more self-sufficient. So economic mobility, that is a buzzword right now, but it's a very powerful buzzword to lift a family generational poverty out of that situation and move them up as far as economic mobility.
And that New River area that you're talking about concerning the Census Track, I know a lot of folks look at Town Center, especially if you've been here for years, and they wonder why the city doesn't do anything about Town Center, not understanding this is a privately-owned property. So can you explain that tract a little bit more in terms of what areas?
Since its track 26?
Right.
Well, before Town Center became as it is now, that was the only, it was 700, almost 700 units of affordable, low-income affordable housing. So when that entity came in and bought those and those units are no longer available for that price point, then it really brought in the Census Track 26 indicators as far as it moved those people out. So now, you don't even have those people in there to be counted. So in these next 10 years, there's no telling how that is going to look as far as the people are not going to be there. So it may not be a low-income area in the next 10 years. So the census data, it counts, it matters. We still have some low-income pockets in there, that we have some lower-income homeowners in the back, back there in the Belfort Homes and on Nelson Drive. So we still have some low-income indicators in there, but that 700 unit and the displacement of those folks, it really has, is really is going to affect the census data for the next 10 years.
Can media go back to the graphic with the seesaw? Or I think we called it teeter totter at one time? That right there. People got to really understand what this means. Because I keep telling folks, I lived in the area with homelessness. And we have it. We have it bad right now. But right now, the woods is covering it up. But I'm now seeing people come out those woods, and they're waking up in the mornings on Weston Boulevard at some of the businesses. So we're going to have to take a good look at how we're going to have to deal with this going forward. You know, when you start looking at people buying these other properties, and we talked about mixed-use properties. So we're going to have to put some, we're going to have to push the envelope a little bit better as we go forward, or we're going to have to chase a serious housing issue. And I'm not talking about people considered poor. I'm talking about people that are schoolteachers. Because they're the ones that's getting their houses yanked from under them when someone, if they're renting, and then someone comes in and decide they want to sell their house. That's what's happening now.
And that term is workforce housing. Those are those folks who they either make the 80% or they're a little bit above, but home has rules that where you can go up to 120%. So we have a system and a way to help those folks, but those are workforce housing units.
And one more question. I saw a graphic where it said administration cost was like 107, was $107,000?
Yes.
What does that mean, actually?
It covers our salaries. It also covers any pre-cost, any pre-cost items such as surveys, anything that's not brick and mortar in construction, that is considered our administration.
So it's partial salaries for you?
Partial salaries, yes.
Okay. Are we, do we have any other departments that cover it like that? Just a grant? Okay.
Mayor, we'll have, we'll have some departments that will have partial, you know, you have police departments typically has some of those officers, you have fire, they have some of those officers. But here, you look at the majority of the funding that we receive through HUD supports neighborhood improvement services. And so being able to have that revenue stream is an incredible value add. Our challenge is being able to put the majority of those funds back into the community to make that impact, what you're saying now. And that's where you're seeing what Tracy and Pam were talking about with the policy that the council adopted, and then the procedures that we're operating under now. We're working towards making our housing efforts more aggressive so that we can create new opportunities for some of the housing developments that we're seeing. That mixed-use development, that's a new thing that we're pushing with our development partners to try and mix units so that people are intermingled and living in the same development. And hopefully, as Pam said, it's bringing everybody back up. You know, it's bringing everybody to that same level to try and raise all ships on the same tide. So I think it's a collective effort. But back to your point, you see that through this funding source because it is allocated through the federal government. And I think we're doing a really good job of utilizing the funds and getting them to where they need to be.
I have one last question. How often does HUD work with, I want to say Congress, particularly when I think about Congress reauthorizing the National Defense Authorization Act? Because now it's slated for enlisted individuals to almost receive a 20% increase in their salaries, and senior enlisted to receive 4.5%. So when you think about the City of Jacksonville being adjacent to a military installation, and what's really driving the housing cost is based upon what that current basic housing allowance. How do our civilians keep up pace with being outpaced by the military in terms of having that extra cushion of financial, that financial backing in order to afford just basic housing when others cannot keep up with that pace? So is there anything in the language that HUD takes a look at those particular demographics to see that you have two sets of populations within a city? And how do we help those individuals who continue to be outpaced by the ball?
Unfortunately, when you have a community that is going to base on one demographics of people, which is the military, you're going to have a raise in rents. We're going to talk about rents right now. So right now, let's take the Town Center. They can base their rents on the military BASBAQ, not on the demographics as far as the people that, our majority of people that live here. So they're depending on at least 700 families from the military to rent from them, and they are getting the BASBAQ to accommodate that. Unfortunately, those folks, they're going to have to, if they agree to rent those units, they're going to have to cut costs from somewhere. It could be from transportation, it could be from childcare, it could be from medical. They're going to be cutting costs. Unfortunately, more times, it's from food, it's just from basic, you know, human needs. So that's, that's the, that's the unfortunate part when it comes to rental. On the homeownership side, there are resources to fill those gaps. So we even had to adjust our policy to increase. And that's what the federal government has realized, that it's going to take more money to promote homeownership. So when she says $50,000, it used to be $25,000 for, as far as a max with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So the market makes the federal programs and policies adjust. So like, we had to adjust, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, they have to adjust. It is going to be adjustment, you know, for across the nation.
Thank you.
And then you have these corporations that's buying out units all over the country just to stabilize the neighborhoods.
That is true, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you for what you do. I know you do a whole lot with a whole lot of little.
You're welcome.
We good?
Yes.
So this time, I'll recess the council meeting, open up the required public hearing on this matter. If anyone wishes to speak to the five-year plan, CNN won't oppose the public hearing. Counsel, are you being asked to approve the plan?
Second.
Motion seconded and further discussion. Hearing unaloud in favor, signify by a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. This is a Legislative Unified Development Ordinance text amendment dealing with zoning districts with residential base zoning districts for multifamily low-density.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council, Agenda Item 15 is a proposed unified development text amendment submitted by Continental Ground Incorporated. They submitted this text amendment to propose an amendment to our residential multifamily low-density zoning district. The request is to reduce the minimum lot width for duplex lots from 65 to 50 feet wide. Staff does not believe that if this change were to go forward, it would create any nonconformities. It would probably rectify some nonconformities that existed prior to the adoption of the UDO under the old RM5 and RM zonings that we had. It's fairly straightforward, but with this amendment, staff is also correcting the table as it exists in the Unified Development Ordinance. In the table, it talks about multifamily in the RMF LD, and that's kind of a misnomer. The only multifamily it allows is duplexes and mansion apartments. In the multifamily, we are changing in the table to list what is actually permitted in the zoning district, and that's the mansion apartment. It's an existing thing, we're just trying to make the ordinance consistent within itself. With that being said, staff and the planning board, which reviewed this proposed text amendment at their June 10th meeting, are recommending approval of this request. And that is consistent with the Camel Land Use Plan Policy 38.2, which asks that we revise the development regulations to be responsive to innovative development proposals and existing conditions. Staff is happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Do we have any developments now that are, that we may have taken in after they were built that are that 60?
Not that I'm aware of. We do have one subdivision in its review process right now that would still meet this proposed amendment. But I'm unaware of any developments that we have taken in duplex developments.
Don't have a question, but I have a comment. This is a good maneuver. I think it's important that we address density as well as need. We talk a lot about housing and units, and how many we have and how many we need. This is an important process to making it easier to develop in our community. So kudos for putting this forward because we don't need to be the obstacle stopping homes from being developed and apartments.
And we are seeing an increase in duplex development.
Yeah. Good thing.
Thank you.
We have a required public hearing on this matter. Any wish to speak? Public hearing is open. No one? Close it. Counsel, you being asked to consider the text amendment.
We approve the zoning text amendment, and it is consistent with the Camel Land Use Plan and also in the public's, public interest.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing unaloud in favor, signify by a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have number 16, which is a public hearing on a UDO text amendment for Wall Street Parking. Brian's going to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This next agenda item is a staff-initiated Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, unlike the previous one where it was an applicant-driven one. This is based on two issues that staff has recognized here recently, and that is that the UDO requirement that requires loading areas to be located to the rear of the principal structure can create some challenges with development layouts. For example, if somebody wants to have a side-loading area, it makes it difficult. Additionally, it's got to be landscaped per an undefined buffer. So we believe it would be a type A buffer, but it's not clear, so we want to fix those two issues. So once again, the rationale for our amendment is desire for that side-loading. The current requirements can create design challenges. Some loading-unloading operations are short-term. The FedEx, UPS, the Coca-Cola, Pepsi, they pull up there that are there for 30 minutes, maybe, and then they leave. To require that to be done in the rear, sometimes it's not practical. So we feel like it's best to adjust that. Once again, if they're going to be there for 30 minutes or an hour for loading-unloading once a week, do they need to screen that from the developing property? We don't think so. That's why we're making changes. So we're going to basically have it geared up for the loading-unloading where you have a loading dock or loading berth. This is similar to Fable's ordinance. Since clearing drafted both our codes, we often go to Fable since they've been using the UDO a few years ahead of us, and kind of look at theirs in terms of how they're doing this. So we kind of use that for the rationale and some of the ideas behind this. So we're asking council to amend the Unified Development Ordinance tonight to deal with these issues. We ran this proposal by two design firms, one local and one out of town, just to get their feedback, to make sure that we weren't creating something that would raise some concerns for them to be here tonight and voice concerns. It's probably not perfect, but at least we did reach out to several folks to say, hey, you know, what do you think? Are we moving in the right direction? And so we're going to revise the screening required for that situation. We're going to give options. They can build a wall, and an example of that would be the Walmart Neighborhood Market at Carolina Forest and Western. They have a wall that blocks theirs so that the people in the apartments behind there can't see the loading-unloading operations. Or they could do landscaping, or another alternative. Additionally, something that we've seen, especially now that we have these elevated facilities, like the bypass where it kind of goes over Belfort Road, you can kind of see the roofs and the backyards of certain businesses, there's really nothing that we're going to require that would be practical in cost, it'd be cost prohibitive to try to screen that loading area or storage area from the bypass. It's just not practical. So if there's a situation, we did the same thing with the stormwater rules a few months back when you revised the code for the landscaping, the fencing around detention ponds. If it's ineffective due to the location, topography, it gives us the ability to kind of consider that on a case-by-case basis and treat them all the same. Another item we've seen is phasing, where we want to build the first building, and eventually we're going to build a building next to it that would block that loading and unloading. We want to kind of create some provisions that still allow that, but kind of put a three-year timeframe to where if the building next door doesn't happen within three years, then, you know, the screen's got to be put in place. That way, it gives them some flexibility for a phased development approach. And then, once again, just eliminates that blanket screen requirement because we think that's not practical. With that said, be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have, and appreciate y'all considering this tonight.
Any questions, Brian? Thank you.
I do have one. The downtown is treated separately. You know, what we're doing with the streetscape, actually, we're creating loading and unloading areas as part of our redevelopment. So that was already exempted, is that correct? Or would this apply in this case also?
In the right of way, that's kind of, that's kind of a different deal than what we're doing. We're dealing with basically on private property. So that would be different than what we're proposing here. And one other thing I failed to kind of mention, that the staff and planning board recommend approval, planning board saw this at their meeting last week, and they recommended approval of that based on the, consistent with the adopted Camel Plan, and it's reasonable and in the public interest. Sorry.
Do we, do we require screening even when you're? Do we require screening even when your compatible land uses? In other words, if we're in a mixed-use, do we, we don't require screening from the other mixed-use development, do we, next to it?
It's the overall screen, are you talking about for loading specifically or screening in general?
Well, screening in general.
Screening in general is based on zone to zone. So if you're a business zone next to business zone, there's no screening required.
Okay. But if you're adjacent to a residential of some sort?
Correct. Then they would have to screen it.
Okay.
Whether it's developed or undeveloped, they're developing property, if it's next to that incompatible land use, they have to put the screening in.
Any other questions, Brian?
Just a comment. What I said last time?
Thank you.
You have a ditto. Thank you, Ryan.
Appreciate it.
This time I'll recess the council meeting, open up the public hearing on this matter. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, we close the public hearing. Counsel, are you being asked to consider the zoning text amendment? Requires a motion.
I move for its approval.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by a sign of five. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Takes us to item number seventeen. Mr. Massey is going to present this as the contract award for constructing restaurants at Lejeune Memorial Gardens.
Mayor and council, as you all aware, as the Memorial Gardens has grown with additional monuments and there's been a need identified for a bathroom, the Lejeune Memorial Garden Committee, you know, has been vocal about this. There's a proposed location. It's called Visitor Center because that was the original concept, have bathrooms and a visitor center. The plan or the allocation of that space, the use of that land for that purpose, was approved based on a request from the Vietnam Veterans Association, was approved by the Department of the Navy, carries the title Visitor Center. We are not building as large of a complex that was originally envisioned. At least right now, it's, this is called Visitor Center Phase One, which is primarily gets us bathrooms and a facility that could stay in that phase indefinitely. We, many groups have been involved in helping get funding for this. Senator Lozara, Representative Cleveland have got five hundred thousand dollars in state funding. The county commissioners using TDA funds have approved a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Jacksonville's TDA has approved seventy-five thousand, and they've been requested for an additional contribution, which they will act on next week. And our nonprofit associations, the Monford Point Marine Association, Vietnam Veterans Association, have contributed funding. We put the bathroom project out for bid. We received three bids. All three of the bids were much higher than expected. With the lowest bidder, we were able to negotiate, change some of the scope of the project, and got the bid price down to seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And we're here tonight to basically request that council approve the awarded bid to IMEC Group for seven hundred and seventy, seven, seven, seven thousand dollars.
Seventy-seven.
And here's a picture of four sides of the Visitor Center. You see, there's basically, on the left and the right, those are the bathroom areas, men's and women's, and a little storage area. And then there's a covered central area. And then, you know, it's just the basic building. Originally, with that center-covered areas would have been closed in, and that's where the Visitor Center area would have been, but that's not the way it's configured right now. So unless there are any questions, we recommend that council approve the awarded contract to IMEC Group.
Any questions of Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ryan. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the legislative budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by a sign of five. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, we will go to the reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Jackson. You ready?
Good to go.
Okay. Mr. Bidder?
No report this evening.
Dr. Washington?
Oh, yeah. I promised to make this short and brief. Okay. I had an opportunity to represent the city for the National League of City Summer Board Leadership Conference. And what I really want to express and what leadership was, instilled us with promoting is the program with NLC, the Grant Finders, and the Local Infrastructure Boot Camp Hub to have NLC staff to assist membership municipalities with securing government funding by helping our staff to write grants to secure these fundings. So with our seven federal advocacies, I just want to lift up one resolution that each of the advocacies are representing and how the infrastructure program was able to help. So with the community and economic development, the resolution was supporting for resources for community navigators to access local entrepreneurs and assisting credit. So one of the ways that the city of Savannah, Georgia utilized this particular resolution to help their city, they was able to receive a one-point-eight million reconnecting communities and neighborhood grants. It's a federal grant to help demolish Interstate sixteen flyover. So a flyover is the same thing as an overpass. And by demolishing this overpass, it enhanced herbal landscape and fostered a community of revitalization. With the Energy, Environment and Natural Resources, or ENER, their resolution was to support and advance resilient communities to prepare for changing climate and extreme weather events. So the city of Boston was able to receive a ten million dollars in federal grant to help build a climate-ready workforce. So the city was able to recruit and train over a thousand citizens to receive job training in construction, waste management, HVAC to combat the growing threat of the rise in sea level. In addition with natural resources, the city of Montgomery, Alabama, received a thirty-six-point-six million dollar grant from the United States Department of Transportation to help improve Selma to Montgomery Historic Trail. With regards to the Finance Administration, intergovernment relations, also known as FAIR, they continue to push for the John Lewis Voting Rights Amendment Act. With the Human Development, or HD, their support of mothers in the workforce, continuing to support equal pay for women, as well as the supporting actions by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention to study and address violence in America. I can remember when I was a member, Green member of HD, one of our resolutions, ten years ago, focused on African-American males and the gun violence that were taking those innocent lives so quickly. And within a matter of just ten years, just looking at the escalation of what violence looks like in the United States of America, and it's no longer basically isolated to a particularly ethnic group or in a particular community, but we're starting to see violence perpetuate in basically all of our landscapes in America. So this is one of those particular resolutions that we want, really want Congress to address with CDC. With the Information Technology and Communication, looking at supporting the digital equity for Americans' communities. So the city of Colorado Springs received almost an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the federal government to basically help bridge the community's digital divide. With our public safety, that kind of goes along with HD's addressing the violence, helping local law enforcement, to help local government to prevent and respond to mass shootings when they occur. One of the interesting resolutions and grants that came about was with transportation and infrastructure to support city, towns, and villages, and calls on Congress to partner with local government on infrastructure rebuilding. So with the city of Athens, Ohio, they basically came into an agreement with other small municipalities to form what was known as the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, or SOPEC, and they were able to come together as a unified force and apply for a twelve-point-five million dollar grant from the United States Department of Transportation to fund fifty EV chargers within that southeast-southeast corridor of Ohio. So that's twelve-point-five million dollars that many municipalities teamed together with the city of Athens to help bring in economic infrastructure, and also looking at transportation and basically increasing that particularly with the uses of EV vehicles. Also, with the town of Gastonia, North Carolina, they received a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grants for safe streets and roads. It was an all-planning-purpose grant, again, from the United States Department of Transportation to help reduce the severity and the frequency of accidents. Currently, as a member of the Advisory Council, which we're term limited because we're no longer on the Board of Directors because of the term limit, we're currently working on a report called the, On the Front Lines of Today: City Trauma Challenges and Solutions, where we are addressing the declining trust that the public is having with local elected officials, also identifying and looking at the polarization that we are seeing in politics, and the incivility that is projected towards elected officials from harassment all the way to death that is currently happening in our country. And this was kind of like a buzz, but it became official today for the state of Maryland. Governor Westmore issued over one hundred seventy-five thousand pardons for marijuana convictions. So when you think about Juneteenth celebration, when we think about where we've come from to where we are now, that is a hundred and seventy-five thousand people that will have pardons because of minor offenses with marijuana in the state of Maryland. So that's my report.
Counsel member Edwards?
Thank you, sir. I will just briefly point out that on Friday, June fourteenth, as part of Civic Affairs Committee, we were honored to host three sequential observations for Juneteenth. And then on Saturday, there was a festival at Riverwalk Park, and I was able to be there and present a proclamation from the city. That was a whole lot of fun. I always like being around people when there's fun, food, and fellowship, and there was no lack of any of the three. It was a very, it was a warm day, but it was a great time, so I was glad to be there. And then tomorrow evening, there is another Juneteenth celebration on the nineteenth in the evening. I believe it's from three to eight. That will be at Riverwalk Park as well. And if you are following that, there is a free symphony from the North Carolina Symphony. They're going to be here in town offering a free concert. I believe some tickets are still available. You'd have to check online and see if they still are, but it's free and open to the public. And then I believe the last bit of news is also related to the Civic Affairs Committee. We are meeting for a special work session on the twenty-seventh of this month to take a look at the Civic Index and begin the process that we usually follow going through the Civic Index, but working on how we can take this out more to the community and to our citizens and our residents so that folks can participate in this more directly, and we have a broader input of data and opinions and evaluations that we need to hear. So there'll be a couple parts. We're going to be working on how we can bring this out into the community more, and then also how we can put it online. So it makes it easier for folks who live in Onslow County, the city of Jacksonville, and anywhere in Onslow County, to participate in the Civic Index, which measures really important things related to civility, race relations, diversity, representation, things you need from your local governments, and things you maybe don't have or do have. It's just a chance for you to give your input for what it's like living here, what you believe about the vision of our future, and what you'd like to see in the future. So I, stay tuned. It's not online yet, but we're working on getting it there so that the process is more accessible to everyone and easier for us to participate with. So look forward to that coming out very soon.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, I just want to offer my condolences to the family of Larry Denning. He was a local business leader. I believe he was in partnership with Louis Shield, Johnson Drugs, and also a former Chamber of Commerce president back in the day. And we lost a good man. I just wanted to send condolences out to the family. So, ahead, sir.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, we'll start out with thank you to the council and the communities for allowing us to bring in the Jacksonville High School girls soccer team. What a great occasion. Mayor, thanks for making that special to them, and for Rose and Lisa for pulling together that video. That's just awesome. We all know that doesn't happen often to have kids that are state champions, but it's a lot of pride in our community when you see these, you see these student athletes come together, and they're very successful. So that's amazing. Second part of that is, for some of those, as you ask, oh, Mayor, from Lejeune High School, from White Oak, from Northside, from Jacksonville High School, we have a lot of kids that just graduated. Over fourteen hundred kids just graduated in Jacksonville, graduated their high school career. And I think that's amazing, and I hope those families and the students can take the time to appreciate that because it is a big occasion. Some of us were there for multiple occasions to see Northside and Jacksonville graduates walk across the stage. Those kids are excited, but they're excited just because they don't even know what's getting ready to happen. And for us as a community, we hope that what happens is they find their path, and then they're choosing their path to be here where the rest of us are at right now. We're in Jacksonville making it better. So I think you see that in the faces of these kids right now. There's a lot of energy. Mayor, when you said and you proclaimed that day to be Jacksonville Girls' Soccer Day, the faces on those young ladies were incredible. You didn't make it Josh Ray Day ever, so I was excited, too. I wish I could win a state title in something. Probably not, Mr. Jackson. But I wish that they can understand the value of that. And for the high school graduates, for anyone that's listening, congratulations, because as a community, we're proud of our kids, each and every one of them. Some people, they went on a longer program, some went on a shorter program, but no matter how they got there, they made it, and that's a huge success. So although there's not pictures to go with that, Mayor, I hate to miss out on an opportunity to say congratulations to all of our seniors. Ms. Edwards pointed out, but Juneteenth observance is upon us. Tomorrow is a national holiday, and I think that says a lot in itself. And I hope that not only the employees of the city and the county can take time to celebrate, I hope our community, as Mr. Carter said earlier so eloquently, can take the time to appreciate the holiday and the value to what it brings to Jacksonville. It may not have the same value in other communities across the country, but it has value here for us. And so that's a blessing that the council has taken action and said, you have a day for our city employees to take off and to celebrate that has the greatness of other holidays that we have. There were multiple events. You do see, the Civic Affairs Committee came right here, did an amazing job to bring the celebration to us, and that was last week. During that presentation, our own Crystal Blockett, she stepped up and sang, Lift Every Voice and Sing. And as I say on multiple occasions, when Crystal sings, your soul is moved. And if you haven't heard Crystal sing recently, come to City Hall on Thursday or Friday, go find her and ask her to sing a verse of anything for you, because she will move your soul. And I almost guarantee you, she will do what you ask her to do. She could probably play any song you want her to because she's that talented. But when she sings, Lift Every Voice and Sing, there's something special in her voice, and she sang it right there a cappella, which is incredible in itself. And so for Civic Affairs Committee to bring this to us, to allow us to put it on G-ten, and then to take it to the county office and allow us to continue filming and reach more and more people, there's so much value there. I don't know if we had a picture of Bishop Zinnerman, but he spoke at this occasion last week and talked about the history of Juneteenth, talked about the value of Juneteenth, and then talked about the mission vision going forward. I think that's a blessing to be able to have our community partners celebrate with us. Also, as I already pointed out, we did have the festival on Saturday at Riverwalk Park. What better place to have a celebration than Riverwalk Park for our teams that put together? For our teams that put together an amazing park and a festival of events, thank you so much to everyone involved. For those stepping up to read the proclamation, thank you for being active. I agree, you have food, fellowship, music, and fun. There's no other reason why you wouldn't be there. That's why I come to council meetings, for those same things, minus the music, food.
Fun.
Fun, but the fellowship, Mayor. That's why me and these people are here, is for the, for the fun factor. But it was a great event to have our people out in the community, and I do hope people, again, show up at Riverwalk Park tomorrow to enjoy the celebration. I think the weather's going to be just as good. We have a lot of volunteers in the community who are trying to pull together Juneteenth events and festivities. One of the things as a city that we want to do is we want to continue to be a partner in the celebration. We don't take the leadership on most of our events. We're a partner, and that's what we do. We sit down at the table, and we listen, and we do the things that they need us to do. That's what you're going to see at each of these celebrations. So I think it's great. I think the festival's amazing. I hope tomorrow, people will come out and enjoy everything that we've had and celebrate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Carter?
No report.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.